I call this the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Riley Hall. Riley's RCA Riverside Christian Academy Athletic Director. And we have the privilege for our pledge tonight, the Riverside Christian Academy varsity Lady Knights. They were the champion of the TS one double A championship. And they're with their coaches Robbie and Lindsay France tonight. And they will be introduced a little later. But if you would, please stand for invocation and remain standing for our pledge.
Let us pray. George, we come to you tonight and we just thank you. Dear God, we thank you for putting us in a community that is so gracious, dear Lord, and just beautiful to live in. George, we thank you for just waking us up, dear Lord. George, we pray that as we go about our lives, dear God, that you would just give us wisdom to follow you and look to you in everything that we do, dear God. George, we love you. We thank you for sending your son to die on the cross for our sins. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all may be seated at this time, Coach France, if you would introduce you and your wife, and then if the Lady Knights will introduce themselves. And if you will, Lady Knights, speak loud because you're not having a microphone, so we'll need that to be picked up on them. I've got my assistant there changing that situation. So, is it on? Jason?
Yeah.
Okay. Coach France?
I'm Coach Robbie France. This is my wife, Lindsay France.
Hello. My name is Ellison France. I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Tegan Bigby, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Ella McMean, and I'm ninth grade.
I'm Willow Brown, and I'm in the ninth grade.
I'm Lily Prey, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Malia Austin, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Ayla Billings, and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Olivia Ragland, and I'm a senior.
I'm Olivia Honey, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Brooklyn Billings, and I'm also a senior.
Congratulations. Thank you, Riley. Thank you, Coach France. Coach France and girls, congratulations and look to your future. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Brandon Coley.
Here.
David Sanders.
Here.
Danny Walker.
Here.
Ben Brown.
Bonnie Caldwell.
Here.
Terry Lynn Rogers.
Here.
Jack Ashley.
Here.
Kate Ewen. Mark Mitchell. Charles Hunter.
Here.
Mary Ann Tackett.
Here.
Steve Spray.
Here.
Daniel Eldridge.
Here.
Jason Nix.
Here.
Anthony Taylor. Doug Cunningham.
Here.
Pat Haynes.
Here.
Tori Young.
Here.
Ricky Bryant.
Here.
Glenn Douglas.
Here.
Steve Guntherberg.
Here.
Troy Frazran.
Frazran.
Jason Hambrick.
Here.
Jenny Rose Walter.
Present.
Twenty commissioners present for absent.
Okay. No announcements tonight, no public comments. Would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for the March meeting. Commissioner Frazran makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rogers, seconds. Any questions, comments on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received fifteen monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. Next item is our library report. Ms. Megan Mur. Okay. Then our next, Dr. Bill Heath for our update on Highland Rim School update. And have you got an introduction also to make?
Well, I think he introduced himself to everybody, but I, yeah.
Well, why don't we let him come up after you then?
That sounds great.
And he may have comments of his own.
All right. So Mayor Newman asked me to come and update you on Highland Rim. First of all, the new facility, I want to talk about it first. Most of the dirt, there was a lot of excess dirt ended up in that project. Most of it is gone now, and what's not gone will be gone pretty soon. Power is on in the entire building. The floor tile is currently being installed in the classrooms. Roofing is complete. Cabinets are being installed. Gas has been turned on. The generator is installed. Concrete for the parking lot, lights has been installed, and the final painting is being completing, completed. So I say all of that to say, it looks like everything is on track for August for the kids to start in that building in August. So that's, you know, thank you to Mr. Bryant for helping keep, keeping that project on target and on time. Takes a lot of work to do that and working with a lot of different, a lot of different folks to make that happen. So it looks like that's going to be on times, which means that the next thing, the next part of the process is the renovation of the old building. There's been several months of preliminary planning on that and discussion with architects and so forth. I don't know exact dates, but there should be some bids going out pretty soon on that. The bids will be done in a manner in which if everything that's on the list that we want to get done needs to fit in a certain dollar amount. And if for some reason it doesn't, then the bids are going to be done in a way where you can back up a little bit. Now, as far as the dollars go, in regards to the, the bonds that were issued that are in, I believe, one seventy-seven now, there's a lot of that money left. There's the one seventy-seven fund that we get each year. You know, there's, there's that money that's either, if it's not there right now, you know, when the new year gets here, that'll be coming in, and then of our fund balance. So there ought to be plenty of money to get that project done and completed the way that we want it done and completed. So, so that's the update. It's a good update. And this is probably the last time I'll be giving you a report on that because Mr. Sorrells will be taking over, coming up and giving you those reports. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your support of the school system. I want to say thank you for what you do for the community and for the citizens of Lincoln County. I know that there's been a lot of things happen over the ten years I've been here or nine and a half years. Sometimes we agreed on things, sometimes we didn't. But at the end of the day, I believe, well, I know, I and the school board were working for the kids of Lincoln County. I believe you were too, and working for the citizens, and sometimes that's hard to balance. And so I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank y'all very much.
Jacob, why don't you come up and we'll welcome you? When you've known somebody for three generations, like I've known his family, and that doesn't include his kids, so I guess that makes four generations. So we go back a long ways. But anyway, welcome to Lincoln County. Welcome to what we think is one of the finest school systems in at least Tennessee and maybe a greater area than that. So any comments you'd like to make, you're welcome to make them at this time.
Well, it, it no doubt is, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't love my home. And at the end of the day, that's, that's the bottom line of why I wanted to come back and just wanted to be, finish this thing out in my home. It's, it's hard work, and when it means more to you, you can get up in the morning and go to work, and it, it, it just sits a little different, right? Because it is, it is personal for me. I love my home, I love my family, and I love my people. So I've always considered you to be, well, you are. I'm a lifelong Lincoln County resident, graduated Lincoln County High School in nineteen ninety-five. You know, all my family's here. It is a good school system, and I feel privileged to take it over. I'm going to do my very best every day for the students and for the people of Lincoln County. If there's anything you want from me, just ask me, I'll give it to you. You need email, call, whatever you want. It's been really good. I guess this is my tenth or eleventh day in the office. I've been working hard, been working with Jason Lot, trying to get the budget ready. So I'm, I'm excited to be here. And, you know, I've been the director for nine years. So people ask me, they'll say, well, what's it been like? Been, been really busy. But, you know, everybody knows how to drive, right? Well, I've driven a Dodge truck my whole life. So I'm just not in a Dodge anymore. I'm in a Ford. And so just the, the switch is a little different, some of the knobs a little different, but it drives the same. So we're figuring all that out, and I'm just tickled to be here and privileged, and anything y'all need, just let me know, and just thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next item of business is consideration for approval to reappoint David Sanders and Danny Shelton to the Lincoln County Planning Commission. Those terms would expire May twenty twenty-nine. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Eldridge makes a motion. Commissioner Haynes, seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
No.
Okay. Let's have a roll call vote, please. I guess, okay. Commissioner Tackett was a no vote. Commissioner Rogers was a no vote. Was there any other no votes? If you'll just record those then, instead of moving forward with the roll call. Okay. Motion passes with eighteen to two.
We have twenty-one present now. Commissioner Brown is here.
Okay. Okay. All right. So that'd be two against nineteen-four. Okay. Next item, consideration to appoint Jerry Mansfield as Lincoln County historian due to the resignation of Clark Wagner. Clark's had a few health problems. He's now living in Milwaukee with his nephew. We appreciate all the contribution he did over the number of years serving that. And Jerry, if this commission approves it, he has accepted that position. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion. I saw a second. Commissioner Douglas, seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
Unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, consideration to appoint Jerry Mansfield, Nancy Harris, Byron Carter to the Records Committee due to the resignation of Clark Wagner and the death of Miss Sherri Tomerlin. Those would expire September of twenty twenty-six. The reason we're got two now, we now have two archivists, Nancy Harris and Byron Carter, which he prefers to be called Butch, Butch Carter. They're working two days each. So the archives is open now four days a week. So they've set their own schedule on that, and both of them very qualified, and we're excited to have them fill Miss Sherri's shoes on that. She did a wonderful job for a number of years, but now that we're in the new building and I don't remember, we got a grand opening there. Anybody remember what date? I don't have that in front.
May twenty, May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, I think it started. Okay. We'll get a notice out on that, but we're looking forward to seeing that. If you hadn't been there since it's been finished, you're going to be really impressed with the Archives building. We saved a historical structure that was part of our community for a long time, and we've made it into something that's going to serve this community for a long time, too. So excited about that. I would entertain a motion to, for those appointments, Jerry Mansfield, Nancy Harris, Byron Carter to the Records Commission. Commissioner Nix makes a motion. Commissioner Charles makes a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, appointment, consideration to appoint Charles Hunter to the Federal Main Street Board due to the resignation of Jenny Walters. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move approved.
Commissioner Spray makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young, second said. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item is corrections report from the assessor. Did everybody get that copy? Do you understand what it means? Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion that we accept the corrections on that from our county property Commissioner Coley makes a motion, second by Commissioner Haynes. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Next item, consideration to appoint Jerry Mansfield, Nancy Harris, Byron Carter to the Records Committee due to the resignation of Clark Wagner and the death of Miss Sherri Tomerlin. Those would expire September of twenty twenty-six. The reason we're got two now, we now have two archivists, Nancy Harris and Byron Carter, which he prefers to be called Butch, Butch Carter. They're working two days each. So the archives is open now four days a week. So they've set their own schedule on that, and both of them very qualified, and we're excited to have them fill Miss Sherri's shoes on that. She did a wonderful job for a number of years, but now that we're in the new building and I don't remember, we got a grand opening there. Anybody remember what date? I don't have that in front.
May twenty, May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, I think it started. Okay. We'll get a notice out on that, but we're looking forward to seeing that. If you hadn't been there since it's been finished, you're going to be really impressed with the Archives building. We saved a historical structure that was part of our community for a long time, and we've made it into something that's going to serve this community for a long time, too. So excited about that. I would entertain a motion to, for those appointments, Jerry Mansfield, Nancy Harris, Byron Carter to the Records Commission. Commissioner Nix makes a motion. Commissioner Charles makes a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, appointment, consideration to appoint Charles Hunter to the Federal Main Street Board due to the resignation of Jenny Walters. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move approved.
Commissioner Spray makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young, second said. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item is corrections report from the assessor. Did everybody get that copy? Do you understand what it means? Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion that we accept the corrections on that from our county property Commissioner Coley makes a motion, second by Commissioner Haynes. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Nix, would you like to address our work session that we held? Any future suggestions? I know you've been looking forward to it.
I guess I'll, yes. I thought it was, for the most part, a pretty worthwhile first run at it. My only thing after hearing Commissioner Bryant, when we first brought up, when Daniel made the motion to actually have one, Commissioner Bryant made, was kind of against at the time, or maybe still be against at the time because of the committee system we have. And after going through it, I would, my only thoughts really are this, that to not upset the integrity of our committee system that we have is to maybe have it on a quarterly basis as opposed to monthly. That's just, that was my two cents.
Okay.
Overall, I thought the first one went pretty decent.
Any other comments on, if you were there, far as that? I, I think with it being our first one and what it had to follow, it made it a long night far as that, and, and some people left. I sure think probably quarterly is enough for it, that you can have discussions on things that, because in this open meeting, you can discuss any of that, too, but sometimes there's times you would just like to know a little more. So I would entertain a motion if y'all want to change it from monthly to whatever y'all see fit.
Move to per.
As quarterly?
Quarter.
Okay. Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion for a move to quarterly meetings for the work session and following the budget meeting.
Exactly.
Following the budget meeting once a quarter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Spray, seconds. Any discussion?
Can we make sure it's on, that, that quarterly, don't follow the night, if we're going all the non-proper.
Yeah, we're going, we'll adjust it some way where it's not going to be, we may not have one maybe while the, that we're having discussion on budgets, but why don't we have a roll call on this, Madam Clerk? If you vote yes on this, it would be moving it from where now, if we don't change it, we're going, the way that order is, is monthly following the budget committee. So if you want to change it to quarterly, vote yes. If you don't, vote no.
Rose Walter.
Yes.
Hambrick.
Yes.
Frazran.
Yes.
Guntherberg.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Bryant.
Since Jason called me out, no.
Young.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Nix.
Yes.
Eldridge.
Yes.
Spray.
Yes.
Tackett.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Coley.
Yes.
I'm going to give you the opportunity to change your mind if you want to.
No.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
I forgot what your last name was. I knew that wasn't going to change.
Twenty in favor. One no. Three absent.
Okay. Twenty and one. Okay.
He could have essentially changed it.
So we'll, we'll see if we may need to back into this where it doesn't interfere with a busy time, but we'll get it arranged and get it out to everybody and make sure you're okay with it. Okay. Next item, Ms. Tracy Perkins, our Lincoln County planner with two items.
Thank you, Mayor. So Planning Commission File Number ZR twenty twenty-five dash one is for accessory dwelling units. Is a call for a public hearing and vote on April seventh. The Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation to request a public hearing and vote on May twenty-seventh to consider adding accessory dwelling units to the supplementary provisions of the Lincoln County zoning resolution. Included in the ADU packet are the general provisions, definitions, covenants, application for this.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on calling for a public hearing prior to next month's commission meeting at five thirty? Commissioner Rose Walter makes a motion. Commissioner Rogers, seconds. Any discussion?
I do. I have some questions.
Okay.
I looked over this, I did, and I studied it, so I just have a few questions if Ms. Tracy can answer. Owner occupancy. Who controls that?
That would be, what do you mean? I don't understand the question.
Well, it says that the owner has to live in the main property or the accessory unit.
Right.
So who makes sure that's happening?
We trust that people will tell us the truth, we hope, that one of them, and they sign an affidavit saying that they will live in one of them.
But we don't follow up on it or anything.
That's part of the covenants, that they sign that are actually going to be in court.
And I want to make sure I read it right. No pre-manufactured homes.
Right. All site-built.
Square footage, fifteen hundred.
That's what the Planning Commission came up with.
Okay. So I could build an accessory unit actually bigger than my own house right now?
It is supposed to be subordinate to the principal dwelling. Subordinate means smaller, generally.
Again, occupancy for people. Who make, who controls that?
Commission came up with that number. So that's.
The commission?
Mm-hmm. Planning Commission came up with all this.
But we don't.
So I don't know how we will control it, other than the covenants that they sign. And, I mean, we hope that we can trust people enough to do the right thing, and if there's a problem, I guess we will look into it, just like we do with all our other zoning.
Utilities and especially septic tank, how's that going to work?
Septic tank, we will get a letter or a septic permit from David Cosby. The other utilities are up to those, those utility boards.
And they'll go out and make sure there's water available at that property?
Well, we assume that if there's a main residence there, that there is water there.
But it would be enough water to support an additional.
Right, right. The idea of ADUs is this, that it puts less of a, it's not as intensive on our infrastructure. The infrastructure is already there for these. You don't have to cut up land. You've already got your principal dwelling there, so already got a driveway theoretically. So you've already got a residence set up, so it should be not as hard on our infrastructure as it would be if we were like subdivisions and stuff.
So if I have one on my property and I already have water, do I just tie into my water?
No, you would need to get with the water board.
And have to get a separate meter?
That would be up to them.
And then will there be a separate address for like nine one one?
There will be a separate address. There will be a separate address. It has to be for utilities.
And so there potentially would have to be a separate septic tank to go in?
Potentially. Now, they possibly could, if David Cosby does an inspection and it will support that without a separate tank, he can write a letter to that effect, and that's not unusual at all.
And then it also said in here, six months out of the year, it has to be lived in. Who controls that and who makes sure that's happening?
Again, it's, the owner needs to live in one of them for six months out of the year.
But if the owners, so if the owner's parents, and they move them in, and they pass, and then the owner decides to move to Florida and decides to rent both, we have no way of controlling that.
Yes, you do. You have covenants that say they won't do that.
But covenants aren't always followed, correct?
I'm telling you what we're putting in place to make sure it's done. Now, how it's handled after that, as far as supervision of it, we're in the beginning stages. We're just now doing the actual, the language and everything for it. So we're still learning on that, but again, they're going to be signing covenants.
So if later on I decide to cut off that house and sell it, I can do that?
If it is divisible and meets our regulations. If it's at least one acre. In other words, you cannot do this on less than one acre. Okay? So it's got to be an A1. And if there's enough land, according to our zoning, then they could do that. But if there's not enough land, if it's not divisible, then they cannot. And if there is something in there that says that.
Or are you saying that if you have ten acres, you can build nine houses?
No, ma'am. One.
Just one?
Max one.
Why are, why are we building, why would, why would we do this?
For mothers, for fathers, for children, because housing is so expensive right now, and we have people come to us and call us weekly, at least weekly, sometimes more than that, asking if they could put a tiny home behind their house or something for their and they're on one income now and they can't afford a $300,000 house. But...
Is that a requirement that they have to be related to the owner?
It is not a requirement.
Wouldn't that be a good idea?
Um, you could, but again, how would you, how would you enforce it? Yeah. I mean, and I think that's why they didn't put it, yeah. I think that's why they didn't put it in, but you can, I mean, we've got a couple of members of the commission here, so they might, can tell you that for sure.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea if it was maybe related.
The, the covenants even say, and I mean, and this is not unusual, all, a lot of cities, counties are going to this because there's such a push for housing, and it's so slow to get housing developed and built and everything. So there is a big push. Even the state of Tennessee has a bill out there right now that, um, basically promoting housing, changing some things to make housing easier, and one of the things that they encourage is ADUs in that bill. So it could actually help with the revenue in Lincoln County as well, because you're gonna have another dwelling on these parcels that you can get tax revenue from.
But could you potentially have that, uh, kids moving in and then that would go to the school that could possibly be overcrowded?
That could happen anywhere.
Commissioner Eldridge.
Get some insight into the thinking of the planning commission. We were doing this, I mean, if it can be abused, somebody can abuse anything we do, there's no way around that. But the intent was to make provision for these, for families who, you know, have a house on a one-acre lot. They have elderly parents, they have, you know, children who are, you know, in college, whatever it is, whatever their situation is, and allow them to put a small, like a mother-in-law suite or something behind their house. Right now, they can't do that. And this is just to allow them to do that, because they get a lot of requests on it. It, it can be abused, certainly, but, you know, I, I don't think that's a very good way to do things that exclude every other good option just because you got a few that might have to be a bad option. So that was our thinking.
Commissioner Frey, wait just, I recognize Commissioner Frazrand had his hand up.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you say that it excludes mobile homes?
It does. It doesn't exclude them, but it does not include them. It's site-built only, contractor has to pull the permit, because there is the potential that it could be rented to someone else later. The owner may not be living in it, so a contractor has to pull it. It needs to be site-built.
That, that, I mean, to me, that right there eliminates some of the explanation he gave as far as cost, because building a brick-and-mortar is, you know, a hundred and fifty-three dollars a square foot. Um, a mobile home could be a lot cheaper than that to help ease the parts of, as you discussed. So why, you know, why are we gonna look at that issue and allow the tiny homes? A tiny home's not really built on the sidewalk.
Right, right. Uh, tiny homes, the, well, I'm not gonna answer to the tiny homes, because the ones that they sell, I think, are not even to code most of the time.
The proposed regulation is between 600 and 1500.
It is. It's 600 to 1500, site-built. Um, do y'all want to answer? Do you want to answer the question as to why site-built, Daniel, or? Just what the commission came up with?
We're talking about the economic side of it. Premade and, and premade and, uh, mobile homes, you know, can be a lot cheaper than the ground, if you ground it up.
Yeah, I can't speak to the commission here, I mean, I don't, that's, that's really determined.
Okay, any, any other questions? We're kinda, we're kinda getting the cart before the horse, 'cause we hadn't even had, uh, we calling for a public hearing, next time's when we probably discuss it. But I don't mind y'all asking some of the questions. I can say that not everything that's a trend, uh, may not be for Lincoln County, but it's definitely a trend in a lot of the counties in Tennessee. I know, um, Marshall County, uh, I think they've complete, have they, do you know if they've completed theirs?
They've completed it yet. I know they've been working on it.
But they're working on it too. It actually started in bigger cities where that land cost was so high. Uh, and, uh, I know Davidson County, some of those communities, I know, first one I know a few years ago when Green Hill did it. So it is something that's a trend. If we do it, we do need to do it right. And there's, you know, just like Commissioner Frazrand said, you know, if you're, if you're out there on the farm, you don't have to abide by these things on that. But if you're looking at a one-acre lot that, you know, this is mainly for one-acre lots or something similar to that, where you don't wanna build just an addition to the house. You can build the addition to the house, that's totally a separate thing. But, you know, if you want an independent living person there and it's not part of your own home, this is kinda what that's supposed to solve. Yes, can there be problems in the future? There sure can be, uh, because especially when you start about dividing. If you're doing it, you need to understand from the very, very beginning, you may not be able to divide that and sell that other house off, sell them separate. Uh, and it's just one of those, it's an information item, you know, it, it is gonna solve a problem. Is it gonna create one that's, uh, worse than what we're trying to solve? I don't know. Uh, but it is one of the things that lots of communities are looking at. And, um, and I think basically that most of the rules are pretty similar to what they proposed, but, uh, we do, I do have a motion and a second on this. Am I correct on that, Phyllis? Okay, but we can continue discussion if y'all like to ask any more questions before I call for a vote. Question been called for, I'll, I'll recognize Commissioner Guntherburg.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
City water runs down 121 State Highway.
Okay.
It cuts off on Red House Road. That left me, Nikki Sibley, my grandson, on a stretch about a quarter of a mile long where there's no city water, period. None. No county water, no. And we've got wells, thank God, that we have plenty of water there. But when I called, when my grandson was gonna build a, a, a house, a barn dominium, I think that's the only thing right now, right down from Nikki Sibley's house on 121 State Road. He had to take a treacher and run all the way down to Red House Road to hook on to the county water. Now, my grandson, I gave him 1.9 acres, we might just call it two acres. So there's one, two, three, four residences right there in a quarter of a mile distance there that has no county water. And when I called them and I asked them, what do we need to do, you can't, no, uh, we're not gonna have nothing to do with that.
Okay, that's, Jojo's back there.
How about that crap?
You may wish you hadn't come tonight, Jojo, so...
Now, let me say something else.
Wait just, wait just a second. You're addressing the wrong person about this, is she has nothing to do with the water on it. Uh, okay.
Well, it's zoning and planning.
Well, I know, but they have to, they get things signed off on the utilities on it. Jojo, do you wanna address this or have him come to the office tomorrow?
I wish somebody would.
Yeah, you can come sit. That would be a full lifetime, but I, but what he's saying is absolutely correct.
Okay.
I simply ran this a wrong way to get to it, because that was just close to next.
Okay.
Well, I don't care down the road, that's a mile, almost two miles long, and it's not two houses on it, they got city water. Now, what's the problem with going a quarter of a mile?
Well, like you said, that happened for him, but I'm sure he'll be glad to talk with you if you'll come to the office.
Now, there's something wrong here.
Okay, well, let's get back to the motion before the, uh, commission. All in favor of, of ca, calling for a public hearing next month for this particular item, please say aye. Any opposed, no.
No.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Caldwell's a no. Anyone else a no? Okay, so we got twenty and one, or is it twenty-one and one?
Twenty-one and three absent.
Okay, all right. Okay. Twenty-four, one against, three absent. Motion passes. Next item.
All right. Uh, Planning Commission File Number 2024-R13 is a request to rezone a 21-acre parcel known as PID 163 on 19.00 on Huntsville Highway from A1 to R3, heavy residential for the purpose of creating a major subdivision. Uh, the applicant applied for this rezoning on December 19th of 24. On January 6th of this, of this year, the Planning Commission did not give a favorable recommendation for this rezoning. On the 31st of January, the applicant requested to defer the public hearing. Uh, the applicant has now requested that the item be put back on the agenda for a public hearing and vote on May 27th.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this item?
I move to concur to have a public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion to concur for a public hearing. Do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Cunningham, seconds. Any discussion?
I have a small observation if I might, not necessarily a question.
Commissioner Bryant's recognized.
Hopefully, we can answer it between now and then. Uh, we've just talked about needing housing, uh, and the need for housing, and how be it tiny houses or whatever they are. And my understanding is the only thing that stands between this and it coming to fruition is the urban growth area, which is not the builder's problem. It's our problem. And, uh, that's all I'm gonna say about that, other than I would hope, and I, I don't come to a lot of those, 'cause I just don't have time, but I would hope that maybe we can talk about approving some of these things. And approving some and saying, okay, when we get that urban growth area done, we're gonna, we'll approve it, you know, and when the urban growth area gets done, you can do this. And instead of denying them every time, because, I mean, that's public enterprise, and public enterprise is trying to build this. Public enterprise is trying to get us tax dollars. We need the housing. So hopefully, we can get to a place to where, since it's our problem, not the builder's problem, that we can approve these things pending the passage of that, instead of denying them every time. That, and I don't know if that's possible, it's just an observation, something to think about for next month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rose Walter.
Be able to speak better to this, but I believe that there's a pending law doctrine that makes it illegal to vote on something because a law is, something is about to happen or we're about to change anything.
Well, I can correct you on that, is that this commission has the authority to do that, and that's, that's court records, so...
I, I'm not sure that I concur with that. I'll have to research further, but when I looked it up online, it wasn't. I really wish that when we vote on these zonings, that we would have in the reports what the ISO ratings are. Um, I believe that 35% of the population is on that end of the county. And there was a fire study done by C-TAS that said we really need an additional, um, fire bay, firehouse, whatever the proper term is, further down the road. And right now, everything on that end would be ISO 10 rating, which is the worst rating that you can have. And our volunteer fire department, all of our volunteers really put themselves in danger when they respond to all of these things. And it's one thing if you've got a house on an acre or half an acre. I mean, most of the time with the volunteers, it, unfortunately, with response time, you're gonna lose the structure anyways. But if we're in ISO 10 and they're having to respond to something that far away and it's so heavy residential, then we're gonna have multiple losses, multiple houses, and, you know, lives are in danger. I really wish that we had in our planning and zoning where we had the ratings of things like that, and also the impact that it would make to the school system, because do we know what, what district that would be in? Would that be District 8? Do we know the school system?
I do not.
It's just not even taken into consideration. And we know that South Lincoln is that capacity. Highland Rim will be able to serve more once that is finished, but it would also upset some bus routes and things of that nature. There's just so much we don't take in consideration of the existing people. So I kinda feel like we bow down a little more to developers instead of really looking at what the present people's needs. And part of planning and zoning is supposed to be addressing safety and health. So I really wish that that was something that we could implement, that we're looking at on the front end.
Well, those are supposed to be addressed, you know, before it ever gets here, but, 'cause they have to jump through the hoop as far as utility, road safety, and those type of things. You are correct about the ISO 10, though, and we do need a, um, fire station further down to serve those people, but, uh, we, we don't have it at this time, so you're correct on that. Uh, what, any other discussion before I call a vote on this for a public hearing next month? All in favor of call for the public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Tracy. Uh, Audit Committee report. Jason?
Um, I won't read the report. Y'all have it to review. Um, all I've got, all I was gonna say is per auditor, this report has to be, have a motion and a second and approved by this, by this body to approve that, um, the Audit Committee reviewed the 2324 audit, which they did.
Don't need any approval, do we?
Do need an approval.
Do need approval.
Need a motion and a second.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion, uh, that we accept the Audit Committee report, which you should have received. Uh, Commissioner Haynes makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Young, seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant, I believe we're ready for the Budget Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee of Lincoln County Legislative Body, uh, meant to do notice at the Lincoln County EMA Office on April the 1st, 2025, 5 o'clock PM. Uh, Item 1, nonprofit hu, profit hearings in fiscal year 25, 26, uh, and nonprofit requests for funding were considered at that time. Item 2, Lacy Beasley with Retail Strategies spoke to the committee regarding opportunities for our county. It's an information item. Item 3, the mayor had nothing to report. Item 4, Sheriff Toad Malone. 4A, surplus sheriff property that is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Hamburg, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve the attached sheriff surplus property.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guntherburg makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Hunter, seconds that. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, inmate medical services. These are bid results. Uh, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, passed unanimously to approve the inmate medical services with QCHC.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
We concur.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Frazrand makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant, seconds. Was it you that seconded or simultaneously made?
I seconded.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant makes second. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
Item C, IC Solutions. That was a proposal to upgrade inmate communication services, and that's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Spray, passed unanimously to approve Option A, and have the Finance Director Nick sign the IC Solution Updated Contract.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Uh, Commissioner Spray makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter, seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
Item 5, Personnel Committee Update. Commissioner Bryant stated that the sheriff is taking over the city of Petersburg as there is no law enforcement in Petersburg at this time. Details of this takeover are still in the early stages. Personnel Committee has voted to give a five-and-a-half percent COLA to employees and ask that the COLA be discussed before the remainder of enhancements are discussed. That's, I guess that's information also. Item 6, Finance Director, 6A, uh, Property Assessor Tammy Painter. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously to approve the attached Property Assessor 101 Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioners, Commissioner Coley makes a motion. Commissioner Sanders, seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
B, Archives 101 Budget Amendments. Uh, we had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, and passed unanimously to approve the attached Archives 101 Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Haynes makes a motion. Commissioner Nick, seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant, next item.
Veteran Service Officer Tammy McConnell had a budget, 101 Budget Amendment, and it's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, passed unanimously to approve the attached Veteran Service Officer 101 Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
We concur.
Commissioner Bryant makes that motion. Do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Walker, seconds that. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
D, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell had some surplus property that's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, passed unanimously to approve the attached Fire EMA surplus property.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval. Uh, Commissioner Douglas, seconds that. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Unanimously approved, next item.
E, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments, they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed unanimously to approve the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Was that Commissioner Frazren? Okay, I don't get y'all mixed up when you sit over there, so. I don't know what happened to it. Commissioner Frazren makes a motion, I'll take a second from anybody. Commissioner Rogers, seconds it, any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. I didn't move it, Commissioner. Next item.
F, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments, they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and unanimously approved, uh, and passed unanimously to approve the attached 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion, Commissioner Young, seconds, any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
G, 143 Centralized Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and passed unanimously to approve the attached 143, uh, Centralized Cafeteria Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Rogers, seconds, any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
Uh, next two items, uh, School Contract Information Item. Item I, Three Star Letter, that's attached, that's an information item.
Well, I think we need to vote on that, and I believe.
Sir, you know, it's on the next page, my bad.
We need a, we need a motion so I can sign that.
Got you.
Well, we've checked all, everything on that, so, uh, there's not.
He did have a motion, it's on the next page.
Okay, all righty.
We had a motion by Commissioner Colwell, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to approve the attached Three Star Letter.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, Commissioner Eldred, seconds, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
J, Financials, they're enclosed. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Spray, and passed unanimously to acknowledge acceptance of the financials.
Would entertain a motion, acknowledge, accept the financials that you should have received. Mr. Spray makes a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Young, seconds, any discussion? All in favor of acknowledgement, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Next item, Item 7, under the chairman, uh, Sheriff Malone, and I'm going to paraphrase this a little bit, he came before the committee and we spoke at length about tariffs, now vehicles and things of that nature, and it was a very lengthy discussion. But the gist of that, so we don't have to read all of that, is that if we buy them this year out of this budget, we avoid the tariffs that we would receive next year. And he will sign a letter that stating that he knows that he got the vehicles this year and that he will not request any next year. And that's in a nutshell what that says, and I'll be glad to read it if anybody wants me to, but that's a pretty good explanation of it. Uh, and we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to approve the sheriff to purchase four trucks and outfit them. And the sheriff gave us a letter stating that the four vehicles will be out of, out of his 25, 26 vehicle line.
Everybody understand that. He'll be signing a letter that it doesn't, uh, go towards the maintenance of effort that will be required to up his budget next year based on what we spent out of this year's budget, which will show up in next year's budget. Everybody understand it. Sheriff? Yeah, we're only buying four, uh, but the reason he's telling me five because he wants, he wants a, he wants one that will be in next year's, that will show up. All of them are going to show up as money of his in next year's budget. Buying four now, but we're going to buy another one a little later. And the reason we're not getting five, there's only four available, is that correct? Okay. Entertain a motion to that effect. Commissioner Guntenberg makes that motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter, seconds, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Next discussion item we had in, in this part of the meeting was, uh, Commissioner Rose Walter brought, Walter brought this up, and it's in relation to Christie Bates and her time and budgeting and, uh, request for an increase in salary. Um, that brought on a ton of discussion about the HR solution study, thing of that, things of that nature, our internal study. At the end of the day, we had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, uh, to refer this back to the Personnel Committee, uh, and that was seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and it passed unanimously. And that meeting, there'll be three items on that meeting, will be the 17th day of April at 5:30.
Okay. Okay, you understand if you make a motion, this is referring it back to the personnel and they've already scheduled a meeting for the 17th of April.
Correction, there'll be four items, the.
Four items, but three others than this.
Fourth one.
Uh, but this is the only one you're referring back, the other, other three are separate items.
That's correct.
Everybody understand, need a motion if that's what y'all want to do.
Move and approve.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Nick, seconds, any discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Madam Clerk, what about them note republics tonight?
I have Adria Bonneville by Commissioner Sanders, Riley Fleming by Commissioner Douglas, Chandra Holder by Commissioner Nick's, Amelia Holt, Sisankum by Commissioner Rose Walter, Jo Lynn R. Clemmons by Commissioner Douglas, Craig Carmichael, Jackie Carmichael, Chanel Carmichael, and Patricia Harper by Commissioner Hamburg.
Commissioner Frazren, you got an addition? Got that?
Mm-hmm.
Any others? Entertain a motion to that list, please. Commissioner Rogers makes a motion, Commissioner Brown, seconds. Any, Commissioner Br- uh, Rogers and Brown. Everybody understand? You did make a second, didn't you? Uh, are we just stretching?
Yes, sir.
You ain't got to do a lot, you know, for me to recognize you. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved, commissions now for any new business. Uh, Commissioner Frazren?
Uh, yes, I need to step down and resign from the planning and zoning of Bill's Board and what our studies have found, the district is not allowed building on the board.
Okay, and I forgot on that, that is an item, who else is on, what other commissioners are on there? Uh, we've got that on the agenda, I think, for next month to approach that. We just hadn't got to it yet. Uh, but we will address that, uh, far as, but that, you're correct on that, Commissioner, but we'll get it addressed real quick. You okay with that?
Yep.
And I still didn't move your chair. Wait, we got a motion to adjourn. The, if we don't get a second, I'll recognize you, but if we get a second, we vote.
We're voting.
Uh. Motion was made by Commissioner Bryant. Okay, lack of a second, I recognize you.
We need to go back and accept all of the minutes from all the committees, we skipped over that.
No, because we was ruled, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
No, we do not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes, sir.
I have a few seconds before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say big thank you to all the people in the commission in the outpouring of love, the cards, visits, coming to the visitation, you know, et cetera. Um, appreciate the prayers, so many people have reached out. I just want to publicly say thank you. And, uh, taking it one day at a time, it's difficult. But again, I just appreciate all the love that I've been expressing to me from this commission. I love everyone, thank you.
So Jack, we love you and we're sorry for the loss. Carolyn served this county, uh, just like Jack has in several capacities. And when I was on the hospital board, she was, uh, director at Donaldson, and she was, that place was run smooth as silk when she was there. And she was quite an asset to our health system. And not only that, for those families that went through there, a lot of times, that's tough times when you got a family member in a nursing home and then you got, uh, people there that not only do they feel the compassion for those people, but the family too. And Jack, we appreciate what she did for our county and you continue to do for it. So we appreciate it and you'll continue. Um, sometimes we fight a lot, you know, amongst ourselves, but when it comes to family, we're all family here in Lincoln County and we're, I don't think there's a person in here that's not for what's best for Lincoln County, and we're all there for those people. Although sometimes we disagree how to get there, but we want what's best, so. Um, Ricky, you still want to make that motion?
I'm making a motion.
Do I have a second for adjournment? Commissioner Fred, but commis- excuse me, Commissioner Guntenberg makes it all in favor.